Dear Honorable Mr. Rapp, I present my compliments and congratulations for the Senate in session. Inform you that due to the marathon presentation of the Director General of the Civil Service Agency, the CSA, on the analysis of the work primary report sent to the Plenary of the Senate and timing of your appearance the same day on matter as it relates to elephant invasion in Bakulu County. In view thereof, the Senate will have me to cite you again to appear before the Senate as a committee of the whole in court on Tuesday, June 24, 2025, at the hour without any end in the Senate Chamber of Annex. It is important to note that your appearance and subsequent discussion on matters are for certain with the four members of the Senate and opportunity in making decisions from an informed position. Please be further informed that the Minister of Agriculture has also been cited on a scene matter and of being attendance. Please accept the reassurances of my highest consideration. Next team, Paragar, Sicily, Jay, Napola, Elsime, Senia, VP, NBA, Secretary of the Senate, Republic of Liberia. I'm resigning.
Thank you for your attention today. The FBA and the ODA, the South Ram, come to our conference.
Thank you. On our empty table, there was a presentation of situation.
Madam Protan, Madam Protan, all the members of the Senate. I'm pleased to have been called here to address the issue of the human-animal conflict. I think this situation has gone on for quite a while. Last year, we were here in your presence discussing these issues. It is unfortunate that we have an issue with animals intruding into the human habitat. We have tried our best to intervene and to bring the situation under control, but seemingly it is very difficult for them. There are issues that are causing this exchange of animals coming into the human habitat. The issues of human intrusion into the habitat of the animal in such a way that it creates problem within the forest and the animals have to run to an area where they want to see inclusion. It is not a hitting fact that chainsawing has become prolific in the country. Unlike regular sustainable logging, where it's done in a organized way, chainsawing is done all over the forest in different areas. And so because of the chainsaw, the animals are trying to find somewhere to go for security and ends up into our habitat. The issue needs to be handled. But we need to also curtail the issue of this prolific chainsawing across the forest and hunting. Once the animals are threatening within the habitat, they will try to find somewhere secure. And the only place they find, and I'm sorry to say that, is human habitat where it seems to be peaceful. And so they tend to come and intrude into human habitat. And when they see farms and other farm product, they begin to consume them. I think we've been working with the National Disaster Commission to see how we can try to mitigate this issue. But it's very difficult and it's capital intensive. We hope that FDA will have full authority over the forest area and then we'll be able to even do better management. But we also have done something. We have designed our community will have the right to manage forest land. And because they have that right to manage the forest land, the intrusion in the forest has been increased. And so therefore, issues that are obtained from FDA to be able to control makes it difficult. It is our hope that we all can find a solution for this matter because I think the human habitat is where we expect ourselves to live and we expect to live in peace. But the animals are there and they are a part of the society, a part of the biodiversity. And I think some of them are on a full protection. I hope this speaks to the issue, but I also brought my wildlife manager who can speak much more to the interaction we have with other government agencies to see how we can find a solution to this problem.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Senator, for this invitation. On nature of human elephant conflicts, they are not only take it out to Liberia. And normally when human activities increase, in most cases also have an impact on wildlife. Over the years, what we've done so far is to train farmers, raise awareness on these conflicts. And our attention actually been shifted to the North West. Precisely, Gulaconne, Bakulu and then Gulaconne, Kepa, Rockima County, Bakulu and Lofa Counties. So what we've been doing is to train farmers because we are working for the eight methods of detection. That is using methods to scare away these animals. If we compare what is happening in the past and now to a very large extent, the cases have reduced. I can recall last year we visited Biwaju, one of your state committees. And then when the kitchen group regards that we have to include more farmers who are currently affected. So based on those regulations, we decided to increase the number of training programs. So as we speak, we are training five new to the old farmers in Gulaconne in Wawa District and also some parts of Lofa County. And we also extend them to the southeast. For example, Akulis, One Way Town in Sando, the Prime Base of Gulaconne, Sapo National Base. But we have also realized that the threats of these animals are not perceived compared to the North West. The southeast is only a river says that we request some cases of elephant intrusion. So we are totally trying to avoid Kepa, Bakulu, Lofa, which are the worst ones. I'm not saying that the threats is, but compared to the past, it has to a large extent reduced. So we are still working with other partners to see how we can reduce the impact. For example, the show of big keeping goes to be scared with animals, especially elephants. So we are also working with another partners to to big keeping to be able to scare with these elephants. The key challenge is that this landscape, we have very limited staff. Take for example, Gulaconne. The Gulaconne National Park is a bit far from Biwaju or maybe Pella Town. And already our staff are very few. We need to be sheltered between Gulaconne National Park and Gulaconne. And then if it goes to other landscapes, it's also the same. So these have been really key challenges in addressing the issue of human elephant conflicts. Now extending, we are also trying to work along with we already met the training team for the National International Association because this appears have impact on food security. And when it impacts the food security also, something has been done. This is why we have engaged the National International Association so all of us can work together to see how we can provide some relief to farmers who are affected by these conflicts.
Humans including into the habitat of the animals. So the animals have to also pay debt to control ourselves? My question is that the the animals habitat, is that protected land that the humans are including? Do we have protected land in Bakulu that they are going to?
Well, we yes, Senators, I think we have proposed protected area in Bakulu.
Proposed?
Proposed.
They are not yet protected.
They are not yet declared fully protected. And I didn't mean that the animals were paying that. I'm saying that I understand. They were trying to move away from the noises because you know the power saw has loud noise. And if they hear sound on the right hand side, here on the left, they hear in front of them and the only place they don't hear the sound is in the back, they'll move backwards. Normally, when you're doing regular logging, you're logging systematically. So the machines are moving forward. So the animal keep moving into the forest further because we start from the front. But when you start harvesting all over the country at one time and with power saws, if we hit a lot of noise and if we hit the animals, a chance to move out of the habitat.
I thought FDA had regulations on the use of power saws. Is this still enforced?
Well, no, we do not have that kind of regulation anymore. When I came in, I met that we have a chainsaw organization and beyond the chainsaw organization, we have other parties chainsawing without having any private understanding. This is an unnecessary evil that we have allowed to be able to put timber in the local market. But it's also very dangerous for the forest. Because every cubic meter of sand timber that's created from chainsaw, you are destroying four cubic meter of regular logs. Could you please?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yes, you took one more question just saying for information, we have five or twenty acres in Liberia so far. Sapo National Park and Sando, G and Grand Lethalist. The EC project reserve in Duma. We have the Global Crown National Park in G and Grand Lethalist. We have the Gula Forest National Park in Kepa and Bakulu. And we have the East End Multiples Transsemble Use Reserve in Kepa and Pombi County. And this is a human elephant conflict where they are, in most cases outside protected areas. And our staff are stationed in protected areas. Take for example, in our old life invasion, Gulaconne. Like in Biwaju, you don't have staff in Biwaju, we don't have staff in Pella Town. So we are sorry, key challenges. This happens to place outside where our, where we have our staff. We are sorry, key challenges. And also have some proposed protected areas. Like Bakulu, the Bull Mountain, the EC, Sapo National Park, Grand Base. You have proposed protected areas and we're all working towards, that's setting a source first of all.
Follow up, brother?
Yes, sir.
I just listened to that. So how?
This is the matter.
Yeah. I may listen to you now. So that means that the area in Bakulu is a protected area. And you are confirming that some of the animals are now within the protected areas?
I'm sure, sir, that ways for these cases they are outside protected areas. Take for example, yes, outside.
So my question, that's the point I'm coming to. How do we as a government ensure that we get some support that will see to it that you will move these animals to the protected areas? Is that possible?
Unfortunately, the animals are not bad with they're not human resources. So and so far, yes, what we should do is to just increase our resource capacity to give them to man keep it outside the areas. But the predators are not fair.
Sir, sir. Madam, MD. I'm listening to your presentation and I have two questions. Since the farmers are affected by these elephants, what have people done in helping them?
Sir, cheers, hello, John. Sorry, to the Senate.
What's question? What have people done in helping them? Since they were infected by the elephants?
I think we could then listen with the government agency that in charge of disaster to see what kind of remedy they can bring out there. You see, FDA, FDA is not like how FDA is meant to work. FDA normally will have resources to do her job. That's where it comes from the forestry sector. But where we are now, all of the funds that gather from the forestry sector goes to an account that is managed to government and we have to request funds to go to do our job. It's unfortunate, like I said, because even the waterfalls we're talking about, to be able to manage the landscape, we need a huge amount of waters. For each of the protected area, we need at least ninety to hundred persons. So it's a huge landscape.
I'm talking about those that were infected.
But that's what I'm saying. So we, well, what you will do, the Disaster Commission, to see how they can get involved.
Since last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sir, cheers.
No, finish it. What? Absolutely. So wildlife, according to you, you said FDA supporting farmers in Bakulu County. Which part of Bakulu County?
But I said we want to do so far is to contact trainers. I didn't say physical support, but we have been like a person with training.
Or training?
Yeah. Pass up with Bahama. With Bahama, then Kumbol, then Chimachab. Or Kepa, they are totally trained.
What kind of training?
Well, the eight methods of prevention. How to prevent or mitigate those, reduce the impact of human elephant conflicts. So we train them, we also give them overall tips to reduce them to scare with these animals. And some, most of the farmers are using them and they are working some, have also decided not to use them and because they were asking for compensation, which FDA does not have, they're doing this now to certainly something happened quite much to repay the farmers.
Yeah, but you, are you aware of the act that created FDA and talk about sustainable livelihood? So how are you putting sustaining them?
Actually, for example, what we do there, we are, a target I want community that are very close to the, for example, Gula Forest National Park in Bakulu. Community that are very close that we, we are into a living for like farm production. That's why partners who are, these farmers to improve their, 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 their living condition.
But according to you, you just said, they are talking about supporting any family in Koko. You can't sit there and say, oh, no.
Look, we have like two scenario. I talk about outside protected areas and those around protected areas. Also, our support has been concentrated towards people who live around these protected areas. But outside is
What about those are in the protected areas? Proposed?
Proposed. If it's proposed, it's a different story. But if it's gazelle by law, then we have a money, all of us, all part of the government has a money now to provide support for communist and above. We're still not protected or gazelle into law. It can be a relationship because one, if one wants to request a funding, you want to know whether the area you are protecting is all the thing you're asking for is all protected or not. So when it's proposed, the level of support cannot be prepared with one, as well as gazelle law.
What about the one that are protected? The act says that if you are in the protected area, you remain there and do your normal, go away, normal distances. What are you doing with the people that are in the protected area? Instead, you people will send the PSU there to deal with the people according to your law.
Madam, 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 Senator, Madam, Senator.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever, since my company, FDA, since my company, FDA, have not authorized NPSU to go into communities to do any enforcement. However, however,
George, you are listening to him.
I think your question, your question of us
You know how the wicked, I want to die here again and battle before. Very wicked set of people. Instead, they're waiting in the forest, they want to, they're before the people. Where are their homes? To all what they have belongings. They see FDA people with PSU. Then he is saying that he is not aware as a manager of the area. Yeah, let's go to the Now, why is that, tell me for?
Well, let's ask Abanigo to do some clarity, Senator.
Yeah.
I think we're talking here from the perspective of where we're sitting. FDA has not formally asked NPSU to intercede in what we do. What we're doing is that when we have a commercial offer with me coming out of the forest in such a way, completely destroying the forest normally. And it's our law enforcement office that we have. Thank you. Please.
Okay, thank you, Honorable. You talked about people living in a protected area. By law.
Josephine.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, by law, it's unlawful for anyone to stay in a protected area, especially national parks.
In a law?
In Liberia, the protected area where people are allowed to stay at law is the peaceful. This one calling multiple assembly use there where people are allowed to stay. So we now should, but then like Gula Forest National Park, Sapo National Park, Global Crown National Park, no one is allowed to live there.
They see the act, so we have to admit that act. And then my last question.
The president, the president?
Yeah.
The law is called law is this?
Yeah.
The truth is in, not in law?
How is it?
If you don't call law before the Senate, many a dog, and put the lie, and don't say any law.
Oh, so I can.
So where is the law in Milano?
The truth is in national conservation of the protected area law. Can you say your name?
I will just take a way there.
So I can call it a fact.
Ahem, so then.
Then we have to conduct, this is the national first of all, no.
Okay, my last question for you. MD, are you aware that the benefits that are going in the counties, the ULVP, all our implementing partners are denying the hunters, the coal, the coal burners, the power saw people because of what reason I don't know. And we are encouraging them to leave the forest. Then they are denying them of the benefits. How? You now? How do you think you will work along with these people to meet up what you want the forest to be like? When they are denied the benefits?
Well, I think benefits come
Their loan grants, the hunters, the coal burners, the power saw people are exempted.
Well, I think the issue of benefit is after you've done something, you get benefit for it. We expect you to be what you do and get the benefit to move someone else. All right?
Okay. I see.
Thank you. I can call off, pretend we're working this issue on the agenda because being here since last year, as FDA mentioned, Kepa is one of those areas that comes from the attack that is animals every time. So another, I say, MD, you emphasize that animals are protected. What protection is there in place for the humans? Because most of the inhabitants of those two areas, Kepa and Bakulu, along the Gulaconne Belt and Pombi, they are farmers. Their farms are destroyed. The elephants do come in the towns. And so this issue is a serious issue. If you go there to reach for the community of people, some of them are even discouraged from making farm and that's their, their income. So it's a difficult situation for them. What place in your path?
Madam Senator, Madam, Senator. I think we all agree that this is an unfortunate situation. It's regrettable. Again, like I said, FDA has amended to do a job or should not empower to do that job. So it makes it very difficult. We cannot come and say, this is how we will protect the human side of the equation until we have the means, we have the manpower to be put in place to do that. When I got in office last year, I made a tour across the country. Three weeks after, I got appointed. And one of the first things I did was to run a man that would need to give up our law enforcement, our render by a minimum of a hundred and fifty persons. Up to today, I would not get in the funding to even bring ten. The landscape of Liberia might be small in terms of to look, but it's large in terms of being able to control it. All of what we're seeing here can be curtailed if we have the people in place to help to prevent it. I'm not giving a job, but I need to be empowered to do that job. Even the situation with the protected area, we can only protect and do because our partners come in. We shouldn't be having that situation because whenever we pull out, right now where USA has pulled out, there's a big vacuum. We don't have the means to fix it. Until we are intentional of how we protect the forest and protect Until we are intentional of how we protect the forest and protect the human in the habitat, it would be very difficult.
So since you...
I don't want to follow up.
Ah, oh, your name is...
Order, order of also...
So since you have declared that it is difficult, this is going to be a very discouraging news for the people that depend on the government to protect and why to protect the wildlife. So are we now suggesting that if you should protect themselves from the animal?
No, no, Madam President, because we, we, we have a sensation, some international treaty that protects...
So hard for them to live. To live just vulnerable to the animals, they don't have food to eat, they make their farms, the animals destroy them. The animals come in the towns, they attack them. How do they live?
That, that's where we, as a government, need to be able to have a means of mitigating.
How? Because you are the lead pricing in a sector. When it comes to managing the forest, you are the leader.
Yes, Madam President, I am the lead.
Madam Senator, you put in here you...
Oh, 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 I said Senator, I'm sorry about that. All right? Yes, I, I'm in the lead. But you put me in the lead at the front of the battle, you did not give me a gun to be able to fight the battle. This is why I keep saying FDA has not been given the means to be able to...
Have you brought a proposal to the legislature to mitigate this?
I think I went talking to the committee on forestry on both houses.
Did you give them a proposal?
I, I told them that we needed to amend the law, we needed to make sure that funding was available.
Have you submitted a proposal? Because talking with us, talking with somebody is crap. But if there's a proposal from you, then the legislature can stand up behind it.
I made a proposal to them, and we are working on that proposal. We have to make sure that we find two men to forget, I, I think for them to forget to you. But with government, we need to have the means, like we're saying, even the disaster commission. If you have funding that our needs inhabit, you can mitigate the problems that are happening on the field.
Yeah, I know.
All right? But if it's not there, fucking with you.
It is not there for the enemy at time, but it's there for all of it. It's that nature, the property, the funding to disaster relief.
Go, 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 go by, go by, uh, wildlife.
Okay, uh, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam. I can still recall, uh, last year when we had a meeting in, uh, P W two. The Prime Minister was very grateful to you for giving this issue at this level. Uh, Prime Minister Bongo, he was very grateful to you and for doing all this issue here. Uh, while we agree now that, uh, this is your, your, your conflict has become a challenge, it's also an opportunity for all of us. As I was done, and it shows that the Gula landscape, Kipmore, Bakuru, has the highest potential for ecotourism. So I'm happy too that, uh, we just established the national tourism authority, which if actually empowered, will be able to make sure this opportunities. The Gula landscape is a very cool place for, for promoting ecotourism. So my suggestion is, we may invest in ecotourism. If people generate money from ecotourism, why would I buy myself a gold fund? And then we have the money from ecotourism. Take for example now, if any person come, they just come to Liberia, the first person to call me, the Gula, the Gula, the Gula landscape, for ecotourism. He wants to share a better today, he don't go far. So it's an opportunity for all of us.
It's opportunity, but we don't protect our people.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, Madam, can I raise some money for ecotourism?
That is still not for me, I still have a few more. Because true security is one of the biggest things we need to do.
Exactly.
The same people don't go to farm for ecotourism, that I will not buy. So now please, you're right, like I said, we need to enter city by making sure we have the necessary means of doing the job we are assigned to. But for me, one of the major things we need to do in this country is very full security. So when that is threatened, all of our lives is being threatened. So I agree with you, we need to find the means. But like I said, there have always been conflict, even between we humans. There have to be a means for mitigating. And we just got to find the right mix to mitigate those situation to that we cannot continue to have animals come. I keep saying for me, one of the issues we have is the hunting and the chainsaw proliferation that's all over the country. It has to be organized. It has to. If it's not organized, we lose control of our forests, our resources, and our future. I agree with you all, we need to find a way to do it. And that's why we depend on you, Lady Platters. Laws are created for men, not men for law. When we see we have some flaw in the law, it's best for us to step back and go in and mend those law to fit the situation that we need. But as FDA and I write, I'm just, we're just an institution, we're star, but we need the means to be able to do our job. And I'm asking you all to help. Whenever a situation comes from the South African communities on forestry or both houses, I hope you have to help support it.
Certainly, because most of us are affected and directed by these attacks. We will move forward with that, but you have to move a little bit faster because there is something to be discussed since last year. And we are still being attacked. I'm sure you are aware of the recent chimpanzee attack in Gahula, mining Gula ponem animal. Or right in Madina, the baby was taken from the brother's back and wounded by this chimpanzee in Gahula in Madinata. You are aware, right?
I am, I'm very aware. And that's why I'm hoping that we can be able to have the means to have tranquilizers to that our ranchers will have it, and our animals that they have can put it down and move them to a sanctuary. And that's why I'm proposing that we try to find a sanctuary. Because the place Alabaza is not good enough. In my mind, I was thinking whether the government can talk to the Tavon family, to the old Tavon farm where we have the zoo. We can go back, fix it up, and use it as a sanctuary to that these large animals can be moved there. But until we begin to do the work that we need to do, we have to treat this with our international partners that we have to obey. These are laws that have been enacted and written by you. And so I'm forced to work with the law that you give me.
So we look forward to that proposal, so we start putting the copy and I continue to see our no suffering while we are here to do that national activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, so FDA, I said, the plans are there, but they need the resources.
What are they, what are they resources?
Uh, yeah, why not, I can give resources.
Because he is trying to say because they ask the past, they don't give the power to manage the money that's a issue. Do I have a national budget? You don't have to give me money that the three owner F D. But that's how I, I don't, that is the whole of the budget, not to give the art, the collection of money and use the money. That's why you are trying to tell us to do it.
But you also require money.
Yeah, they are trying to tell us that we should change the art, to give the power to, to collect your own money and spend it, because the one who is part of the result, who have a national budget, who can sort it first, to move the animals to the sanctuary, that's the key.
I didn't, I didn't want you to...
And then, Senator, I, I, I guess, I cannot argue with you, you're the senators, but we are the only S O E. They are actually supposed to be working on the landscape. All of us, they are collecting money, they, 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 I'm not on the great side then, but you are asked us to do a work. Every time I have to run to the, 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 the Finance Ministry to get budgetary allowance, it takes me two months, the problem we're talking about will continue to be there. Whatever FDA was enacted into law, it was meant to function as a corporate entity that government owned. The corporation works under a board of directors.
If you want to resign, say, not that...
Yes.
So the problem is...
No, I, I, I want to help you see.
Same period, oh, I don't understand. You don't understand.
So, so I, I require a whole before conversation, yes. So I think we should deal with the African issue. Uh, the, the, the committee on agriculture, African work, the discussion, and we sent something to the Senate. Yeah, I think they should have done that for a long time.
A sanctuary.
So for M D, uh, what is...
They, they gain, it takes money. It takes money.
Yeah. So, so I will ask our cultural committee, we have to work with FDA to present a report that the Senate will debate and make some decisions. Yeah, because we may have a legal issue for a long time. Yeah, we may have a legal issue for a long time. So, but anything different from the, uh, issue of the elephants?
Yeah, a little bit. Thank you, Madam President, colleagues, to the witnesses. Uh, my attention have been drawn to the statement made by you, according to your explanation, Chief. He said that the animal have been driven away by persistent chainsaw activities within the forest. Who issued the verdict? For once, we carry our seen saw around. And besides that, as Managing Director of the Forestway Authority of Liberia, how many reserve forests that owner would mean that you can post off? If yes, how many marine do you have in hotel ring to monitor the wildlife and all of activities to report, to prevent, you know, uh, the, the wildlife affecting city area? Thank you, Senator. Let, let me, let, let me answer the last one first. We do not have adequate number of people in the national. Like I said, when I came there the last time, my first people were making a tour in Huma. At that time, I needed a hundred and fifty archetypal ranchers to be out in the field to help protect the area. And this is, this, this are the issue that we all have to debate as a country. What do we intend to do? Because you're right, we have a huge landscape of forest that we are proposing for protection and conservation. But the landscape is said that it would need a lot of manpower to manage it. And if that is not what we have right now. What I inherited was a small group of ranchers that did not have the capacity to manage the landscape.
Let's agree that you don't have manpower capacity, but at least you have the manpower. Which one allow, uh, forest that you have absolute control over, the land, the scarcity of manpower that you can post off, you say, in this particular area or this county, there is a portion, small portion of forest that were protected and covered by the marine.
One of the only places that they have right now is the Disney Park, I'm sorry. Because it's a small landscape. But all the other landscape, we have not managed to control them properly. We have encroachment, we have encroachment in almost all of the major protected area. We have, we have encroachment into the Saco National Park.
So, uh, uh, follow up. With respect to the chainsaw, according to you, you said that the things, the chainsaw activities in the forest is scaring the animals that going away. And you are the same person that issue permits. And as a result, there are others, uh, according to Madam, uh, Lada, the animal invaded, of whom, where a child was taking their resources, one of them wounded. And the consequence of issuing of this, uh, uh, permits, these are things that have come out. What have you to say?
What? I can't be able to not issue permits to chainsaw operation. We do not. I'll not issue one permit to any chainsaw operation. We met in the landscape, like I said, it's an evil that's been started and think by government and even our international partner, which I keep trying to refute and tell them we have to organize. We have to find confined position where we can put the chainsaws there to work, where they attack the trees and keep them confined. All the people in the chainsaw operation now do not have license on F D. So where do you get it from? They just go in the field, and I'm sorry because they get permission for community, because we gave the forest to community and go to community, and they get a right to saw.
But you have, you got ranger and sign at the burial gates. When they coming and get at the gates, what are some of the measure putting to place for what you are this? Since indeed, you are not issuing a permit?
Sir, Senator, that's a difficult issue to address. And I think maybe we will need to do it on other pieces. People in this legislature are pros that also have the chainsaw operation. Can you mean? No, I'm not, but, I'm not, but, like I said, we discussed it too. All right?
But I, I, can you be allowed, I have a question, come on.
Oh, 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 I'm saying, oh, I'm...
Get on the round.
Oh, I'm...
Hello. All of us, all of us, Senator, 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 okay? Senator, okay? Senator, all of us. There are some, Mr. Williams, Mr. Managing Director, or you get it, our, and you stop.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Yeah. You see, when you make the step that you just made, it causes a special on the legislature. For law, because general. So if we go some more, maybe one of them, why you want to make a general?
Yeah, I just know what this is, because...
That, that...
One minute, the man, right?
That's what I said, son. We...
You know, when I look for a nobody, maybe you, you volunteer your own information. So volunteer if you want, they just to... Yeah, I'm pretty confident now. You're talking, you're talking now, you're talking now.
Senator, I, I would like to reserve that, and I will write you officially and send a list to you.
Uh...
Like I said, like I said, Senator, I reserve it. I will write you and send a list of all of those that are know, in the legislature that are involved in chainsaw. Okay, so you can have, understand and check with your colleagues.
So we will take that, but we gave you between nine, Thursday, or of the fourth Thursday, to send our official communication with this to the Senate, addressed to the President, to leave the world. Or of the fourth Thursday, which is after tomorrow, same being, Senator, okay? You get a call for another day? That, the only area that you have there, you have some chainsaw, that is very desperate. The only area that you won't come and move for that, so you have to respect. Mr. Managing Director, you have all of the fourth Thursday, same being, June...
Cannot bear, can't indulge, and...
When you are part of Rastafarian, why you both coming to meet here and do this? You govern yourself, please. The Senate is instructing you, all of the voters, the same being, June twenty sixth, to submit the list addressed to the office, to the project on the Saturday of the Senate. Anywhere, I saw all of them.
Let me, yeah, let me...
You see, Senator, so, uh, you're the Managing Director, my last question.
Do you have any memory of S D, FDA collecting fees from, from, from people selling on a plane fee, as well as those who saw a plane coming in town?
I know about the checkpoint collection. Any other issue on the field I'm not aware of.
But you do authorize them to collect free from there?
Like I said, this is an evil that we are trying to pay away. All right? I, I inherit this, gentlemen, and I'm trying, I'm trying to fix it.
Why is you a clown?
You know, what I assume, what I say you are, so let, let you believe. Uh, colleagues, we have anything confirmation here, after session? The committee has... The committee has this confirmation here in after session here. Let's on the channel of, according this, Senator Toku, followed by Senator Tomoyan, Senator Donkey, I can do, you can, please, I mean, I so, please, Senator Charlie. According to this.
According most of the, the thing is, Senator. I really want to be very practical in my voice. And I think there are some things that we need to be very, uh, I can say about. First, since twenty fifteen or even before then, I think our international partners are being playing with us as a country. Follow the guys on conservation and making sure our police in property while we save the rest of the world, for things that they have done to us many years ago on the administration. They want us to save the war at the time, when they have damaged the world and they want us to keep our forest, that is why they come, they finish strategies. They finish strategies as to how they will hold hostage our forest. One of the guys of protective forest, one of the guys of conservation, one of the guys of meteor, stay far, put the own the forest. Because we are unable to stand only to address this issue, I think that is why we are here today. Trying to answer this question. When we have control over our community forest, our citizen, especially those in the rural area, we can control activities there. What could they, that we set aside our four protective forest and our people who live around the forest and who they are very poor? What could they say? Today, in Reverend G. County, we have a grand people national park that is for Reverend G. and Reverend G. F. While our people living there are very, very poor. We are not clear as to whether carbon credit have been sold as a result of the time we have kept the forest for. We are not also show only gas of the World Fair Friendship Program. Since twenty fifteen, they put a certain community forest that they were going to help our people to go to the nice there, making so purposeful, so complex to extend to be, to be proud of people for harvesting their lungs in the forest. How? You get with it. How are we not show that there was a scare? It was a scare to keep our forest so that it can be getting the carbon credit. So, I'm telling you because some of the issue we raising here all come around this. Why are we benefiting from the protective forest? Because if we have insufficient resources from the protective forest, we have not enough to build a protective to the forest. If we have resources from the non-protective forest, but our people own the protective forest, we have resources to address the issue that we're talking about, not to be following people that tell us, oh, you harvest only beans in Reverend G. County. They will have only beans in Reverend G. County while they sell our carbon credit. I want to ask five question, and you don't have to answer that, and you can. I raise you point as a basic, because I want to be very clear to the great people in answer my question. The first one I want to know is that, what do we benefit from the Sabu National Park? According to the forest, do we have any form of carbon credit that we are selling? No, you are no need to ask, since you've been doing your investigation. The second, what is the status of the World Fair Friendship Program that you are taking more than, I think, ninety seven vote, or, or less, or community forest for step one to step nine, so that our people decide whether they will do logging or they will do conservation? We need to know, because when you are preserving the forest or you're going to help us, we got to know where we are, if it's since twenty fifteen, there are a lot of forests that have not reached the next step. I need to know that. And the next one I want to know is that, please, uh, just see what's police. Are there any, are there any plan, or do you have any framework to addressing the issue of making sure that our people own their community forest with little or low cost to them, since they are the owner of the land? Because from my estimate, it will cost there on the average of sixty thousand US dollar to reach the nine step to own the forest. Thank you.
The, the, the first one on the forest, on the forest conservation issue. I think that is with India bird, because the law of two thousand six, we agreed that we put thirty percent of our forest estate on a conservation. So, we did it by an agreement, so you need to look at it. As far as I know, there's no carbon credit has been given. However, we've polluted one area in one Giza that we've polluted as the government and NGO, but they're telling us that it will take two years before it come to where we can see the carbon, because I do want to know whether carbon issue is of any substance. The issue of the community forest and the nine steps, I would think that we passed that law already, because you have passed a new law that gives the land right. So, in a land right law, you need to do land formalization, and once they done, it means the community own the property. However, I want us to be conditioned of the fact that we are a nation state. We're not a feudal system. Dividing our resources between ourselves would limit our ability to be able to use the property. That communities should get benefit for the land which they are better keeping, I agree. But to think it was how we doing it, is why we are not seeing any real benefit coming out of the process. So, we need you all need to look at it again. It has been almost fifteen years since we started the community forest. We gave fifty seven of those up for CFMA, only four of them are working, and they are barely working. You all need to really look at the situation, just. Europe started as a feudal system, while individual groups are there. The former, it could not work because it was not to the good of the whole, and it brought it into a nation state. We're taking a nation state and making it into a feudal system. It will be a more problems for us than good, because I think if people will be aware, even in communities where we have same pride, or have different sections, we have a confusion now of how we do market land. We have to be very careful. The law of like you said, all forest was for the people, but in trust. And I hope we could see the wisdom of going back to that trust, because a union strong success is short. Because if we put a trust, from my extent now, that the trust must give value to the people, not giving it in manovia where we in manovia make the money. For me, that is where we can move this country forward. We cannot do the same thing over and over and expect a different result. Forestry before the crisis went well, it made the money. The only problem were not sharing the money with our community of interior, we need to do that. So, I would like to see you all look at the law review, see whether it's working to the best interest of the country. Because they will start to look at our individual self and leave the natural basis of our whole, all of us. With my master mark, we are hundred and seventy seven years ago, one hundred and seventy eight. We need to move our country in a direction that will make sure it grows. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm listening to the, the FDA, I, I just to know, you've been here for almost a year. And I'm just here, this, but you have a valuable point you just raised, I'm just hearing that. Because it's important, after we have held our forest hostage for many, many years, and then we come over this idea now, you know, I mean, I'm kind of confused, I mean, Senator Toku, what part of the deal make to the world, what can the community or some of these that are presented to us before us, because I'm poor, I suffer, that's my concern.
And Senator, I'm very glad that you consider our concern. When I made my tour across the country and I reached the Sabu upright, I shed tears. Now, forty years Sabu have been on a conservation, and the lives of our people have suffered and I change. There were no safe drinking water, I didn't see any good school. So, I'm concerned as you're concerned. I am working with the committee, the committee on forestry at the Senate, and with the committee on forestry at the House. And it's, it's a process that we're working with. Once I'm sure it's been put in the proper format, it will be a problem for you. But let's agree with one thing, I've been in this sector for a long time. I have been with the reform. And I think when I appointed me as managing director, I think there was a lot of statement, I said, this managing director does not agree with the law. Because I did not agree, we have a formulation of our law. We are committed to preserve our forest. And that's what was being done in the old days under the national forest.
Yes, Senator, the court asked you back in every one year of plus now.
Let, can I speak, sir?
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm working with the committees that you give me. I'm sure the oversight I have is from the Senate Committee on Agriculture, Forests and Forests.
The plan every year before is high to the committee. Some plan I was asking you, then you get your own, and you know all the problem, you put there, so. What company have you done, exist reporting or you?
No, I, I put it in writing.
Okay.
I put, I put.
Have you draft bills to either amend or repeal your standing position of the Forestry Act? What is it that you will establish?
Mister President, I believe we've been working on it that day, we start the pursuing from the act from themselves.
Mister Managing Director, you keep saying, we, every time we ask you, what have you proposed to this committee? You say you're working on the committee, you identify all the problem you get.
Mister President, can I?
I think you want, you want, they ask us to speak for his face. That's the immediate way you come in the media, that's the way you come. Even your body language is becoming this stuff of this here. And the woman not it. You are verify, you are verify all the problem, you know all the problem. Anything we, you also want empower you, because anything they put there by empowerment, most of them, they do not do anything when they go there to empower this position. What specific empowerment you talking about, and what position and law you talking about that we need to look at, to have a method or repeal to bring up the speed in killing a current reality? Have you made the direct specific proposal in writing with draft to the committee? What's that?
Mister President and Members of the Senate, yes, I've, I've done it in writing. But I believe it would be wise that. Let me not do that.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Well, I, I, I've done it in writing.
You done it in writing?
To my oversight committee.
Mister Chairman?
Okay, if anything, you are not interviewing on what you are asking me. But you already provide some information about it. For the past, the one here, there have been only discussion with the committee, even the both committees, or the joint committee. Then, you let me find one concern as shown companies in enforcement of the forestry law. The challenges it's facing as an entity in reforms, the concern over this, develop, we discuss it. Well, we turn out is that the FDA has now formally packaged the information in totality to bring it to the committee as we discuss for us to present it to the planer. On all these things that is discussing, there have been discussions with the joint committee, both in context and focus to be presented to planer, to, uh, president, to be put in context and in focus to be presented to planner. But it is something that he have discussed with the joint committee. We have, there's some documentation, it's said, but there has not been sent formally for us to present it to planner. No, but, no, we can sit down and have discussion, right? Or for draft to be made to send to the committee for the two committees, and one at the house, and the Senate to carry it to the.
That is in progress.
In progress.
So, police, tell me fast, I mean, uh, I think the continuity of this year, where the, the Minister of Agriculture himself will also be here. Um, the committee will, um, the, the secretary of the Senate, by plan, there is a structure with some of the minister and the director to the continuity of this year in a period of time, so, uh, for the the committee will definitely, it's gonna be, uh, for time. So, in a period of time, we are asked for motion to adjourn. And then, in the next fifteen, twenty minutes, NEC confirmation here, ready?
NEC again?